Are you all ready? Are we good to go?
We'll be here in just a second.
You ready?
Yeah, but we're missing the.
That's what they say about defibrillators, the first thing you should do is make sure they're on.
Or check the. Age catching up with you, huh? You need glasses? Who are you kidding?
It's not Monday night, Sunday afternoon or Sunday night. Think it's Sunday.
We have exactly four P M. The meeting of the village horses playing board is now in session. The first thing that we need to do is have Rachel read the role, please.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Root.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Turk Lilly.
Here.
Mr. Bursh.
Here.
Mr. Cundy.
Here.
Chairman Stenfett.
Here. We have a full boat and we do appreciate everybody coming. First order of the agenda is minutes of the July twenty eighth meeting.
But why I did not prepare those.
Okay, duly noted. We have a motion on the minutes. Steph.
Doug.
A motion made and a second. Read the role, please. Rach.
Mr. Baker.
Hi.
Mr. Root.
Hi.
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 Hi. Number two subdivision application Southern Tier Logistics Holding Point. And I do believe that we can have Jen from LaBelle here. You're got right up to the table. Thank you very much. Please tell us what it is that you seek.
Thanks. So, um, Jen Vaughn, LaBelle Associates, representing Angela Hawken at Southern Tier Logistics. And what we're requesting today is to subdivide a twelve point five eight four acre out of the full holding point facility. And the purpose for doing that is to enable moving forward with leases for Seaman's Mobility to enable financing and such. So that that's the the reason behind it and I'd be happy to ask any questions might have.
I don't understand why it has to be subdivided. How does financing work in the equation?
My understanding is that this is being driven by the financing to support the loan application for this particular building construction. Yeah, but not being an attorney nor an accountant, I can't explain it to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, you tried anyway.
No, it's a basis of need.
There there must be something in there that the attorneys helped to. Yeah. Okay.
Oh, exactly.
Any questions from the board? All right, from what I can understand, this is very similar to what we did with Duncan at G C P. And you have to go along with Article nineteen special uses in site plan review in our code. More specifically, the site plan review. And see, we went through this last month, so we'll go through it again. The authorization to grant or deny site plan approval is vested to the Board of Trustees after planning board, that's us, review and compliance with Article nineteen. And therefore, as I've looked this over, section one, A, B, and D are waived, being that they are already, this is already established. Um, applicant has complied with all the maps and information regarding one C and one E, one through fourteen. Section two, A, part of the part, particular parcel proposal meets existing community needs. Two B, it's compatible with the village comprehensive plan. And two C, it's not staged. So I can come up with the conclusion that we don't see anything further additionally from the applicant. And that's all I have as far as that goes. Any other comments? None heard. We should go next to the short environment, environmental assessment form, part two, impact assessment. We have eleven questions. Number one, will the proposed action create material conflict with that land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No. Two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area, C E A?
Not now.
Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
Not now.
Six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy or, and if it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conserv- conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public private water or public private wastewater?
No.
Good. Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important store archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, i.e. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna?
No.
No.
Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Based on the fact that we had eleven noes, I can determine if this is a negative on the short environmental assessment impact assessment. All right, that being done, are we ready to go to a resolution? Or are there any other questions? None being heard? I have a resolution. Whereas Southern Tier Logistics Logistics is the owner of one twenty Y Gant Road in the village of Horsetts. Tax map number forty nine dot oh three dash three dash five, also known as the holding point. And whereas the owner is proposing to subdivide twelve point five four acres of said lands could be the future location of a new facility and is known as proposed lot number six. And whereas this planning board has reviewed the application and is charged with making a recommendation to the village of Board of Trustees. And whereas this board has received a final plat reflecting proposed subdivision on a street which is already improved with utilities and public services. And whereas this board has reviewed parts one and two of the short environmental assessment form regarding this application, finding there to be no significant negative environmental impacts of this proposal. Now fear, now therefore be resolved that this planning board, planning board hereby recommends to the village Board of Trustees approval of the application of Southern Tier Logistics for subdivision of twelve point five four acres from twelve point five eight four acres from one twenty Y Gant Road, tax map number forty nine dot oh three dash three dash five, per the minor subdivision proposed lot six man submitted by LaBella, dated eight five dash twenty five project number two, 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 four, five, four. Anyone like to so move this resolution?
Oh. Second.
Discussion.
Well, discussion being heard. Read the role, please.
I'm not part of the planning board, but does this setback meet the project that they wish to do?
It does not. There is a area variance application coming.
Good to know. And it's for which parcel doesn't.
The twelve point five eight four acres.
Where doesn't it meet the setback?
I think all the way around. I don't know. I have, I haven't officially seen it yet.
Okay, nor has an application been.
Right.
Okay, but this is for the subdivision. So the area variance is a separate entity by itself.
Or you could change it to where you don't have to worry about the variance and change the setbacks. Or made the property be subdivided to include the setbacks. Or ignore the entire thing and deal with the variance.
We haven't received any notification of problem. We haven't got a map to go on. So it's like, but what are we going to go on?
Well, like I said, that was, that was the question that was asked.
What variance you need?
I'm sorry.
What variance you want?
An area variance.
Yeah, it was.
Well, if you have this map attached to the application, the, meet the.
I don't know how that relates to the setbacks.
Right, setbacks are.
Do we ever, do we have the I I guess power to say waive setbacks for this parcel?
Well, I think I think it's important that the planning board know that they're subdividing a parcel that doesn't meet the setback when they want to do the construction. And that it's going to be another project or another phase to this. And it sounds like none of that information has been disclosed to the board.
Yeah, isn't it?
Because we are, so you can then, I mean, right now, I guess it's still your assumption that we're going to apply it for one.
The reason on the east and west of the building is it's ordered directly by railroad tracks. And Southern Tier Logistics likes maintaining control of those tracks and not have those be subdivided out. But there's like a physical boundary on the east and west of the structure, just for your information.
I would suggest that we move on the resolution as we then the subdivided and we'll worry about the setbacks when you submit all the information, which we seemingly have to know.
Is that what your expectation was?
To make September's meeting.
Yeah.
I think I told Angela this. Uh, our meeting's going to be this one second or because of Labor Day, we're pushing it out.
No, no, no. Fourth Monday is the twenty second. So I can just go with the fourth Monday.
So whatever, I think it's fifteenth.
I thought you had said we had time, just in effect.
Yeah.
And that would also have to go to town planning, town planning, village planning.
The area variance word as well as the.
Yeah, yes, yeah. You're just basically setting a bad thirty days. That's all.
Yeah, to speak on behalf of Southern Tier Logistics, I think they would certainly prefer to see this move as quickly as possible. There's an accelerated schedule currently underway to construct the building and bring the jobs into the community.
We're, we're aware of that, but we're also not going to go on something where we're clueless on either. So I don't, I don't think the guy's for thirty days is unreasonable. Okay, read the role, please. Rach.
You did thirty days.
Can I get you the variance application thirty?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
The town planning board meets on the first Wednesday of the month. So the town planning board will be meeting on September third um, for this, for your subdivision. So the next time they meet after that would be October first. County planning meets on the third Thursday of each month. So we, depending on when you get in, we can get forwarded to them by September eighteen.
September third, Labor Day, isn't it? And the September ones.
One.
F Y O. Okay. Mr. Baker.
Hi.
Mr. Root.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Turk Lilly.
Hi.
Chairman Stenfett.
Hi. Thank you very much. And we'll conceivably see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, James.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the application for an area variance from Frank Mikkel. Frank, come right up to the table and let us know what it is you seek.
Okay. We're trying to build a garage with eight seventeen Hewitt, which is on the corner with Liberty Street. Um, twenty-four by twenty-four garage. Pretty, pretty basic and we're seeking to be able to move that five feet past where we would have been allowed to move it. So it would be twenty-five feet from the edge of the pavement on Liberty Streets uh, instead of thirty. That kind of lines up the man door on the side with the with the steps to get into the house. Makes it a little bit easier for my wife who's got Parkinson's and that's why we moved it ahead a little bit.
The garage will put them at eleven feet from the property line. With this being a corner lot, their thirty-foot set, front yard setback actually runs right down the center of the house.
That's this line here.
Correct.
So I also assume that it's not compliant on Hewitt Street.
The house, correct. The house is not in compliance in any direction.
So basically your grandfather, because he was there.
Got you, correct. And they're wishing you go five feet forward of the corner of the house on the Liberty Street side, which will put them at eleven feet from the property line.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? None being heard. We should go to what the United States requires us to do is go through the five points um, required for an area variance. And the way this works with the state is board asks five questions. We either answer positively or negatively. Um, and then we weigh the positives and negatives. In other words, if you have a couple of negatives on it, it doesn't torpedo your application. It just basically weigh all the variables and then come up with a resolution either for or against. So the first thing we have to consider is will this cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood?
Not.
Two, is there a reasonable alternative to the variance? Now, I think the key word here is reasonable. Because I can see an alternative. You just move your garage back five feet, but you've already got the padboard.
Yeah, unfortunately. I mean, you guys probably know the story there that.
Well, the board doesn't know all the story. I don't know all this.
Oh, okay. Well, I can tell you, I.
Please, do you want to know the story?
I hired a contractor.
Okay.
It was recommended to me by, by someone who works in the local state police barracks here. He said he's a good builder, do a good job. I said, okay, great. Want to build this? He gave me an estimate. Um, he said, uh, just write me a check for two thirds of the money for the whole project. And he said, we'll get it, we'll get it started. And I said, well, we had a death in the family. We had to fly overseas for a funeral. I said, let's wait till I get back. He said, no, I said, I'll, I'll have it up and done before you even get back. No problem at all. I said, okay, great. I said, well, you're gonna, you're gonna go down and get the permit then? He said, yep. I'll take care of that. We do it all the time. Going to go down and get the permit. I said, okay. Fine. Well, I came back, the pad was poured, the walls started going up. And I got a visit from Mr. Young knocked on my door and said, you don't have a permit. I said, what? I said, he told me he quit and got the permit and he didn't have the permit. So I, so I was stuck. So he already had the pad poured where we laid it out so that we could, and we laid it out that way so we could line up the man door with the entry to the house and make it make it convenient. Um, and uh, so we're, yeah, so we're, we're just stuck where we're at now with the padboard and some of the walls started to go up. We're, we're kind of dead in the water right there. So it kind of, it's just been stuck there since.
Right.
Since then.
Well, I can, I can say that you could call the contractor in and you could pour five feet back into, to south of your current pad and do all that. And then that also makes your entry to the garage look kind of odd. It adds a lot of extra expense. So I would say, even though there is an alternative, I would say it's unreasonable. How do you guys feel about that?
The pads poured, right?
All four walls are up too.
All four walls are up too.
Well, no trusses on it, yeah.
No trusses, no trusses, just the walls. Let us know how you feel.
Like a lot of extra work.
It started, it started, let it, let it continue.
Would the pad have to be broken up?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
No, that wouldn't have to.
Just use it as your approach.
Yeah, you just make it bigger approach.
Yeah, just approaching.
If all four walls are up.
If walls don't.
Pick it up and push them back. Nominate you to help. Okay.
I don't have, I won't give you my number.
Bob, how do you feel on this?
Well, we, I mean, because the house itself is not already in compliance. Even if we were to say pour more concrete out back, pick up the garage, push it back five feet, what difference does it make? It's already ahead of the setback line.
Right.
You know, if this makes life easier for his wife.
Yeah, that's, yeah, my original thought was is it's unreasonable. Yeah, so we'll say, no, there is not a reasonable alternative to the variance.
Yeah.
Is the variance substantial?
Based on where the thirty-foot setback line is? Yes, it is substantial.
Yeah, I, I, I totally agree. You guys all okay with that?
Yeah.
So yes, it is substantial. Will it have an adverse impact? No way.
No.
No.
No. Is it self-created?
Um, yes.
No question. This is self-created.
Well, depend on that by him.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a motion on this?
I move to recommend approval of the application.
Now, second.
Motion made and the second, would you read the role, please, Rach?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Turk Lilly.
Hi.
Chairman Stenfett.
Hi.
With that being said, what's the plan for the driveway?
Um, well, I think I said something about putting in a driveway there as well.
And then are you going to eliminate the existing one?
Um, I don't know. Do we, would we have to?
Per code, you, you can only have one driveway opening for single-family residents.
Yeah.
At a maximum of twenty feet wide.
Were you going like that?
At the, at the opening.
Yeah, see, we I have some kids and grandkids. They always come visit. There was always like four cars parked there. And uh, but it's our, we're parking for two. Uh, so they park in the grass there, but uh, uh, we just bought the house end of April and they had poured a brand new piece of macadam right there be from Liberty Street to the edge of the house. Um, that's looks nice. So I, I was hesitant to want to have to tear that up and put in another driveway to the garage. I guess if I'm not allowed to put a second driveway in, maybe we could just let that go for now. It's down the road, switch the driveway from where it is over to the, over to the garage. Uh, it's less than ideal, but uh, uh, not sure how else to approach that really. I mean, there's no there's no curb cuts there on the street. There's no sidewalk there. Uh, so I was, I was hoping that maybe with the variance, I would be able to include a driveway to the garage.
Are you going to keep both garages? The one, the other one?
He doesn't have, this is.
Okay, this is, this is an old survey.
Yeah, that's an old, yeah, they redid the house and that took that out.
Okay, yeah.
Well, can I add, um, and I'd like to get managers in, but we, we can now park in your front yard. Correct? As long as you don't create ruts.
Correct.
You can concrete your front yard if you want. You don't have to grow grass.
Correct.
He has an asphalt pad already poured in anticipation of that being the main driveway. There with no garage. Advocate comes forward with a garage. You can park in your front yard as long as you don't ruin your yard. So they can park on that asphalt pad. They're not going to ruin their yard. So we have seemingly a catch twenty-two situation here.
Well, here's the thing.
So what, yeah, what is?
That garage is eleven feet from the property line.
Okay.
From the property line to the streets, about another twelve, thirteen feet, fourteen feet.
It's twenty-five feet from the front.
Which is right.
Garage to the edge of the street, the pavement of the street.
Okay.
It's exactly twenty-five feet. Um, so I'm will probably eventually just make, you know, pave that or something from the garage to the street, but I don't I don't know if that would, because of course it would go across the right away of the, of the uh, the street right away.
And I, I'm saying that the board has already established you can park in your front yard as long as you don't ruin your front yard. You can, so if you park on a pad, you're not ruining your front yard. It's the root.
Right.
So in this case, I think what the board has done, allowing you to park in your front yard allows him to use that pad. That's, that's the way I see it. I don't know. This is why I'm throwing out there. Why? Can you give some clarification? Or how do you feel about it? This is kind of a gray area kind of a thing, but when they said you can park in your front yard, no more off-street parking from two A M. to six A M., that changed the whole ballgame. We got a game changer.
Yeah, my, my neighbor parks his pickup right there in his front yard every day. So he's, he's.
I'm sure he does.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they built it park in the yard. They have the ability to park in the street. Um, he has to cross the grass to get to the asphalt. He has the opportunity to, to do that. Um, I suppose you could always consider variance on the second driveway if you wanted to as a planning board.
Does he need a variance? Right? That's my question.
Yeah, it'd be a secondary driveway. You can only have one.
Where does the first driveway go to?
Is it a corner? What? Just right up to the house.
The driveway doesn't go up to the house. It goes to the garage.
Well, this one goes up to what used to be garage, but it's now a house.
But, but yeah, so it's not really a driveway now, right? But, but, yeah, so it's not really a driveway now, right?
It still is. Can't they have two? Nope, no, single-family residence only. There, you can only have one in a single-family residence.
But can't you consider that asphalt plot is his front yard and not a driver? No, no, don't, don't do anything. You can park in your front yard, that's, that's.
I would say no, because it goes right to the street.
Well, your front yard goes to the street also. There's a lot of front yards that go to the street, we got a lot of side streets in the village. I got a side street that goes to Burns, goes right there, I could park on Burns if I wanted to. Village couldn't say no. You can park in your front yard. So I, I, I wonder if the two car, the two driveway things possibly obsolete with the with the a big, a big, ability to park in the front yard.
And which means, why is that a driver? I mean, paint it green, I think it's grass.
Yeah, I mean, here's, there is no law that says you have to have grass in your yard. You can asphalt your whole yard if you want to. So if you asphalt your whole yard, why can't you park in it? They will allow you to park in your front yard.
One opening though at the street, you don't have one cutout.
And that, that's, and that's the part of the driveway, it's, it's one cutout.
We have many streets, Burns included, I have no cutouts on Burns, but believe me, everybody drives on it. Even this is a parkout, everybody from pediatricians always drives on it. There's no cutout there, but those, it goes grass, well?
No, he asked me something about, if you just, well, I, I see what you're talking about, it's entrance where you end.
Correct.
I mean, if you, if you just, somebody just put a pa- a, a blacktop pad there, it wouldn't be considered a driver, it's just, I mean, if they build a basketball court, it wouldn't be considered a driver. But then you wouldn't have an opening to get into it.
I, I think we have a built-in catch twenty-two. You can look at it both ways.
You still have to have two openings.
Right.
Is there a curb there?
There's no curb.
It just goes grass to road. Just on my south street, which is the front yard, goes grass to road. There's nothing stopping them both and driving around, they do. Even parking lots. I mean, the parking lot is too full of the factors that they put on.
Stuart Ordin says that he could drive on that grass to get to his garage as long as he doesn't ruin the law.
Basically, yes.
It was. Right.
If he threw some gravel down, would that be considered?
Yeah. Gravel, dirt, concrete.
Again, if, if there's no curb, how could there be two openings?
It's still classified as an opening where it ties to the street. That's still can't see twenty feet wide at the opening.
Yeah, exactly.
Those that, those that do not have a curb doesn't mean that they have a fifty-foot driveway opening. They still have a twenty-foot driveway opening to their property. Just because there's no curb doesn't make it the entire property from an opening to your, for your driveway.
So it's your department.
Yes, by access, accessing through that opening that is considered the twenty-foot.
But you can't ruin your yard.
Right.
So you, from my understanding, but you could put a pad in front of the driveway as long as it didn't approach upon the right-of-way. You could have a pad go up to that point and have patcher grass between that pad and the road, you could you could drive in there.
But you'd only be able to go to the property line, not into the right-of-way.
Right.
And you have more right-of-way space than you do from property line to garage.
It was twenty-five minus the eleven, right? You can do like a fourteen-foot pad or something. Then you'd have like eleven feet of grass to drive over to get.
No, you can do eleven feet.
Eleven.
Of pad, then you're gonna have fourteen feet of grass to the street.
Not, not seeing a map, how what does he have that connects to his existing driveway?
What do you mean?
Space.
As far as width, here is where the the asphalt is. This was just a, a vacant lot, grass, but there was trees that they took, the previous owners took them off, made this all open. Created it for a potential garage, so they put, um, asphalt here for two cops, side by side, to line up for, there's a side door. Okay, so the, they were, they were selling the property so that, you know, we have a place where you can park the cops. Driveway, so to speak. They had no idea whether the owner, next owner would want a garage. Okay, so Frank came in and he and his wife wanted the garage.
Mm-hmm.
So what do you do with that piece there is where, where we're at. And I'm saying, well, you can park it, this is a front yard, he's a corner lot. So I'm saying, well, you can park there. He's not gonna screw up the grass or the front yard by parking in the already pad, you know, asphalt pad is there, so why does he need a variance? And I'm also getting, well, it's two driveways. So like I'm saying, we have a catch twenty-two.
And then what you wanna do is in the future, or at some point, add a second driveway that goes right into the garage that's being built?
Right, right, yeah.
It's got some stone down there now. Crushed them.
Yeah, there's some stone there to build a put-down, let's see, it was built in a garage, but, you know, if if I'm allowed to, I would, I would put a paved driveway in there to the garage, but uh if I'm not allowed, then I, I guess we'll, we'll have a a garage, it's landlocked, but we'll drive over the grass to get to it, I don't know.
Which is what we don't want to do, because that was when you said we can park in the front yard, we don't want to ruin the yard. Right, so that's where we're at.
Yeah, well, alternative would be to turn blacktop out to the yes, or you can do one in, right?
Right. Tear it out or put
But does, yeah, take out like if you wanted to leave it, you have to take it off, I would go right away going to it.
Well, they're separate, so there is no right-of-way, I mean, you couldn't drive onto that and then drive into the garage, you wouldn't have the angles to do it. Um, yeah, well, you could put topsoil over that driveway and put seed on it, and grass is gonna grow.
So if you put topsoil over three feet, then what?
He could conceivably put topsoil over that existing asphalt. Have that come, come up and be, and then drive and park on it and he'd probably be all.
But if he put three feet of grass from the road to the gravel, that's not an entrance anymore, right?
Yeah, you're probably correct.
Sounds to me like a variance for a second driveway. And then this board will have to make that determination if that's what they would like to do.
I'll guess it is.
I think I included that by request in the paperwork, I mentioned that other driving.
So right now, the, the variance has been approved for the location of the garage.
Right.
Did this, did this application have a variance for the driveway as well, or is that gonna be a separate application?
No, he didn't apply for a variance for the driveway, but I would say we're all aware of what situation is. And I'd be inclined to act that.
Under uh, reason for appeal, please, reason.
That's for a use variance.
Oh, okay, I, I just played there.
You filled it out.
Driveway required for access to the garage.
You filled out the application in the use and the area, you were actually just the I would be inclined to cut Frank and his wife's, a little bit of slack here and we've we all know what he wants, his space is two hundred and fifty dollars. I, he's improved his property, you can't believe it, whereas people that's built, that's improved, you can't believe.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I think there was a curb there, where the curb hadn't been cut. More different to me.
Yeah, there is no.
If the curb had to be cut, this where we're not, you're not cutting the curb.
He's not cutting his.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalk, there's no curb in front, just my yard right up to the edge of the pavement.
Correct. So I would be inclined to, to vote on the variance for a second driveway, you guys wanna go along with that, or do you, how do you feel? We have to.
Do we have a variance for the second one? We don't have to do it.
When that in front of us, we, we do know all the particular. This may appear says it all. We've discussed it as much as we can possibly discuss, I don't see how we can discuss it anymore. So shall we proceed with a discussion in an area of variance for a second driveway? We go then, we go through the same uh, questions.
Rachel, could this application be modified or should it be, I think it should be a separate application personally, but um, and it's not to delay the process, it's just that. Well, regardless, I just think it's, I think it's, I think it's two different items. Um, I don't think this application as, as an application for itself.
Mm-hmm.
Even though the drawing was, I mean, we don't even have on the drawing where the driveway is on the site plan.
Right.
We, I mean, just from this conversation, you know where it's going to go.
It's implied that it would go straight out, but.
You don't have anything on this map that tells you exactly where that driveway sits.
Okay.
Well, that, that's, that's why I think it should be, and it's not a matter of accepting or denying, it's just, that's why I think this should be a separate application, because other than this conversation, there's no knowledge of this driveway. But I don't disagree that this Terry's second driveway does make sense. But at the same time, you as the planning board have to consider all your locations within the village that have no curb to one's property.
We made the house over on Tiff dual variance for a second driveway when she built her garage behind the house.
Right.
My personal opinion, we should have a, a, a request for doing this, and, and we don't have one. So I mean, there should be something saying that we requesting us to make this decision.
Okay.
That's my thought.
I guess it's my mistake, then I thought I'd put something in there about having a garden, but I guess it was on the other form.
No, it was, well, no, it was, it was on the form, but uh, this form uses uh, it's in the, you, you put it in the use variance request, requested section.
Uh, yeah, I don't know what I do with.
Okay, so then I think after all this discussion, we've just, we've gone over everything we can possibly go over. We've gone over all the viewpoints. Then you, if you want to have a second driveway, you have to do another application.
Another check for two fifty and another.
I would be inclined to waive the two fifty, but that, yeah, that's up to the board of trustees. Or the manager. Or you can grass over the existing thing and forget about going forward.
But if I grass over the existing macadam, I don't need to apply for anything to put the driveway into the garage.
Correct, you can just go on driveway to the garage. So that's where we, that's where we stand. Would you, how would you feel about the two hundred and fifty?
Um, I, I can understand waving it, and it's something that I can present on a waiver.
I mean, you've done wonderful, and it's wonderful what's done to that section. A few of it's, and um, yeah, if, if one person does something, other, other people follow suit, you know what I mean? And so, I mean, this is fantastic.
Yeah, we, we like it there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I'd like to sell a personal, but you know, trying to improve the, the, the challenge. Here it is at all, in the entire we're trying to make the village better.
I write a bill up to that.
Thank you.
It wouldn't be three feet.
I mean, this.
It'd be sixteen feet.
No, I mean, this one.
On the street.
Not here.
Yeah. This black line is not the street, this white line is property, not. Another fifteen, fourteen feet this direction.
If you put three feet of grass here, that's not open.
But it's still on the right-of-way.
You can drive off.
But it's still on the village right-of-way, it's village property. There's like very much. It's one of those odd streets with huge right-of-way. Stop with the sign.
Are we done with this one? Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, I need to get some paperwork filled out then for.
You still have the applications I, these when I, from when I emailed them to you?
Yeah.
Same thing. Yep.
Same thing.
Same thing, just the highlighted sections though. If it's not highlighted, don't fill it out.
Now bring it back to the, to you, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Back when the original companies were paying that he redid in two thousand, it was proven two thousand and ten in nineteen sixty-nine, USB was considered one of the blighted areas of the village in Horsets. Say what they've done on that corner, it's fantastic for Peter and Speed. Because there are still some in the middle of US, some apartment properties that are just
Grant Sancho.
So, I mean, as I say, I think we should be capful of it all. And gradually.
No, I, I, like I said, I'm not denying the variance, and I'm not denying the option of a second driveway. But you still have a process to go through.
Yeah. All right.
That's, that's, that's the only thing I'm saying.
I, I had a little bit of trouble agreeing to a variance when one wasn't applied for.
Yeah.
That's, that was my point, I mean.
Okay.
And I do understand that, yes, he did put it in here and he put it in the wrong section, he was and this was emailed to him, I so what, I, I guess everybody's not aware, and you'll see, if you look through, you can see the ones that are shaded. Those are highlighted, I have it saved on my computer, so I send people fill out only the highlighted areas.
And they don't go by it.
They don't read the rules. They just don't pay attention to the map.
I, I'm used to that. I, I'm used to that.
Well.
It's a crazy situation, I mean, if the contractor would have gotten the permit. Still would have had the problem with the driveway, but. And you know, like Bob was saying, the whole, the properties. All screwed up anyway with the ver- uh.
Well, when I, when I talk, when I talk to him, I talked to the other guys who built the house, I talked to him, and we. We went over options, but we never agreed on what he was gonna do, he didn't know what. So it was, my final. Resolution was, before you do anything, check with Coke. So when he says the contractor is gonna get it, don't go by what the contractor says he's gonna do, you gotta follow through.
He said in my office a few months ago, right after he bought the house. Talking about sheds, talking about garages, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do yet. I got a lot of thought I got put into it, I might just do a little bit bigger shed and not do a garage.
Yeah, so this guy was all, all over. He was all, but the bottom line is the corner looks great. I mean, the house before was just a shit. And so now it's just.
That's on the record beautiful.
Well, it's true, the house before.
No, because we're still recording. The owl, but.
It was terrible, and now it's beautiful, so. I, I'd like to see more of this in the village. Bottom line. So that's my case, I don't want to be punitive in any of this. The parts store on Schmung Street that we gave the variance to consolidate. They were gonna take care of the lot next door. They were. And I don't think it's been mowed yet.
Yes.
Oh, it is now, okay. I was on vacation for a week, I must have missed it.
Yeah, it was mowed like. Two months ago.
Okay, so let's go to old business, new business, uh, old business, I just saw, it was reported in the papers that. Chipotle is gonna go on to Riverside and Hornet. So I don't think they're gonna do anything here next to the Red Robin, it's still a piece of grass. It's doubtful that Chipotle would have put two that close together, so. I think. That's the, that limit, that's the latest announcement, we're going to the, where Tops was. On the Riverside. And the next meeting would be Monday, September twenty-second, which is the fourth Monday of September. That's all I have, anybody else have anything else? I was gonna have a discussion on second driveways, but I think we covered all about, we, we can possibly cover on second driveways. In parking in the front yards and street bump.
So most likely for September we'll have. A variance for Southern Two Logistics, a variance for a driveway. Plus you.
Right.
I don't feel like there's a word.
Do you have any other possible?
Yeah, I, I, it, it's hard to say, I literally just met with the homeowner. An hour ago, just over an hour ago, measuring her front yard. I said, uh, connect basically the two side porches across the face of the house. But that's in that really stages, she's still shopping for estimates. And then lastly, I just have a motion of clothes.
Ooh.
All eyes, like that one? I.